Thank you. Welcome to the Town of Norfolk Planning Board Meeting, April 15th, 2014. It's 7:40 PM. Please be advised that this meeting is video and audio taped, and if you should choose to speak on any matter, we'll need your name and address for the record. First item on the agenda is a continued public hearing on MacArthur Ave., one-lot subdivision with Landmark Engineering. Paul? Well, Paul's getting set up. Just so everyone knows, we have here tonight a latest appointment to our planning board, Ray Goff, who is now the town planner, and we welcome Ray to his very first and probably pretty long meeting.
Thank you. I'm Paul Cutler with Landmark Engineering, and I've revised this plan, as we talked about last month, to a 20-foot wide roadway. And I revised the slope of this from a 12% grade to an 11% grade. Using the 20-foot roadway, this is a 40-foot right-of-way, it gives me 10 feet from the pavement to the property lines to do the grading in. So thusly, the -- I'm going to have to put retaining walls in along the sidelines here to grade it down. And that includes a retaining wall from roughly this point, about 240 feet back, to that entrance to that driveway, existing driveway here that the concrete slab is on. I've also had to place a retaining wall in this area, about 30 feet long, and one in this area here to prevent any grading onto the abutting properties. I've also shown some catch basins at the bottom of the roadway before it gets to Lakeshore with double catch basins into leaching basins on either side. And I've also shown a proposed driveway would be roughly in this area to get to this lot. I've shown two catch basins just prior to getting to that driveway, located here and here with some drainage running down the street, and this would be into like cultech chambers or infiltrators located here. And that would pick up all the drainage from basically this point down to the driveway, and then from the driveway back here would be picked up by the drainage by Lakeshore Drive. The slope of this, having an 11% grade versus a 12% grade, it pushes the roadway deeper into the hill, basically, and it means more grading along the sidelines. The 12% came up roughly in here. I have a copy of that also, but the 12%, it's not as drastic of the grading involved. The one I had before was a 16-foot wide roadway coming in with a 12% grade. As you can see, that's, it's less obtrusive than the 11% grade.
Remind us again of the length of that road.
This one here?
Yeah. Well, the first one that you showed, the one that you're going to go propose to do.
I have this at 200 feet. In other words, 150 feet from the property corner back to here to 150 feet, and then there's about 40, 40-some-odd feet in this area. So the total length is 200 feet.
Has Bob McGee seen that plan yet?
He has not, no.
And then you'd still just kind of feather it into the existing grade. Had you thought at all about the request Bob made, which was to at least, you know, simply grade out the remainder of the road to make it passable?
In this area, up here.
Thought he'd talked about the entire duration.
Well, this, I have graded this up. In other words, it comes down to a certain point, and then it has to drop into the proposed 11% grade. I can stretch this out longer, but I've made this about one-on-four as far as the grading, just to get it back to existing grade.
Is it after that, is it relatively level? I think they're --
It doesn't get level till it gets up to here.
Yeah.
In this area, it levels off. But from here down, it's, you know, it's just a slope all the way down the road, all the way down to Lakeshore Drive.
I thought Bob had asked that he didn't want binder course or any paving, but that to at least grade out
Right.
the remainder of the entire road to connect to, what is it? What's the intersecting road on the?
Hunter.
Hunter?
Oh, Hunter back here.
But the other road.
Yes, Hunter, right.
I think what we have in front of us first, before we get into, I think, the hardcore engineering aspect of it, is how we're going to treat this private road situation, whether it's a private road, if it's a right to improve, if it's going to be a public road. You know, sooner or later, you can normally make the engineering work or not work. That'll get proved out one way or the other. So rather than get, you know, too deep into it and, you know, feedback if you don't agree, I think we have to, you know, address that issue.
I agree with you. I thought that Gino was going to provide us with some direction, you know, outline, if you will, the various options that the board has, whether it be under law, or precedent, or a combination of both. But I asked Betsy the question, and I'm led to believe that we have not received anything. So to your point, I mean, until we have that type of information, it does make it, you know, perhaps difficult and perhaps, you know, a time that may not be very well spent, you know, to go through all the engineering and then find out that what Gino puts together may sway the board in one direction or the other, and we may come up with an engineering solution which may not fit the, you know, the legal or the precedent which perhaps would, you know, would dictate.
And in absence of that, and I thought that if, and Gino, Ray took him out back and killed him off earlier tonight.
Yep.
If Gino was going to have that information for us, or maybe Paul did, is what this is legally. You know, we have a lot of conflicting opinions here of what they are, and I'm not qualified to sit back and say, "You're wrong. It's this." You know, this is, this is something for deeds and titles and determinations that either you guys need to provide, or Gino was going to get for us, or a combination of both. Because unfortunately, you know, I think as this town develops more and more, there's lots of little of these paper streets here, you know, especially over in the Lakes area, and that's going to come up. So...
There was that, absolutely. The second thing we had talked about was there was some concerns from abutters about access and maintenance, and that was the second part, I think, of a two-pronged thing we had asked to, for everybody to discuss and come back next time to be ready to talk about was an agreement. You know, there was only a couple people that needed to reach an agreement about how things were going to move forward. So I think that was the other aspect of what we last talked about when you presented.
I guess...
But absent of the legal part of it, that conversation may not even have much merit because...
I mean, we can sit here and get bored to death talking engineering up till we're blue. No offense.
Yeah.
But it could be all for naught if we don't have the right to do it, or you don't have the right to do it. So, Dave, you don't have anything further on this. You're getting pulled in last minute. I do have questions from the crowd. Betsy, could you have him take a mic, please?
A former member of the...
Yeah, just introduce Naaman for the TV.
My name is Norman Mulaney. I live at 89 Medway Street. And I was a member of the planning board here back in the early 1980s, and at that time, we adopted a policy not to approve private ways, because it comes back on the town, down the road, 25, 50 years from now, people living on that road will want the town to accept it. And private ways are not encumbered with building the road to public standards. Now, even this road here, I took a quick look at the plans, and I'm not sure that it meets current standards. We're talking about leaching catch basins. I'm not sure that that's any law or acceptable. Most requirements now is that you have to put in a oil and debris trap should there be a spill of contaminants, you know, get trapped in the upper layer of the catch basin and oil products in particular, and not contaminate the water supply of the area. The grades that are shown here are extremely steep, and I'm not sure that that meets with public safety standards of today. I don't see any details on stone walls, but you mentioned that they haven't got into the hardcore engineering, but...
Well, this is actually second. We spent quite a bit of time the last meeting on this. And we're more concerned, and I appreciate the history and the feedback, we're more concerned on whether they have a right to move forward at all on this piece of land, you know, prior to getting into the engineering aspect of it. Paul's done quite a bit of work on it already.
Are you planning to approve this tonight without the engineering background?
I mean, we couldn't do it without the feedback that we had requested of the applicant in our, you know, planning itself.
I would assume that they'd have to present details showing all of their specific designs for you to approve.
Well, yeah.
That's the normal course.
We didn't expect to be in a position to approve the project tonight.
Especially in absence of, you know, Gino getting us an opinion of the street.
Yeah.
Because truly, we don't know what the status of that road is.
Well, normally today, you know, they build detention, detention basins that have overflow spillways, sedimentation basins. None of that is presented here. And whether it's required or not, that's another issue, but putting underground storage in is one way of doing it. But again, if you don't have catch basins to capture any illegal spills, if you will, you're going to contaminate the groundwater. So I don't think that meets current DEP standards, in my opinion, anyway.
Appreciate you speaking up. Thank you. Anyone else here that wants to speak? Grab a mic. Name and address.
Paul Griffin, Alan Butler at 26 Hunter. And I just want to go on record to say, I think Mr. Chipman is correct. It's really a town council issue first, and I want to make it clear as to why I believe that. The Building Department would not approve an expansion permit for 28 Hunter several years ago. And the way it got approved was the DPW wrote a letter saying that MacArthur was not a developable road, would never be a road. And that frontage was then approved going to the center of MacArthur in order to get that permit. So essentially, by default, to some degree, you've already abandoned that paper road by giving that permit.
Well...
So I'm not a lawyer. I just want to agree with you that this needs to be reviewed by the town council.
Right, but Hunter is one road, but MacArthur is another.
They took, they gave the permit based on MacArthur, his property going to the center of that road. He did not have enough frontage to build his Hunter Ave. expansion, until the DPW wrote a letter and said, "We will not develop MacArthur, and you can include that footage as your frontage on MacArthur." And he was granted the permit, and the expansion was completed.
In what year was this?
Approximately three years ago.
Really?
And I submitted a letter to...
On this report?
I submitted a letter to Betsy from the DPW which states that.
I don't remember seeing that at all.
I don't remember seeing it either.
I don't doubt you. I just don't remember seeing it, I was here.
So I think...
Do you got the specifics on that, Betsy?
Go ahead, speak on.
I think it goes back to your opinion that no engineering needs to be done now, but you need to determine if you have the right to do this, or whether or not it is a paper road anymore. It's a very undeveloped site. Topography is perfect for a ski slope. Other than that, it's not. And the retaining walls that were discussed for us neighbors would be ridiculous. 10 minutes after they move into this new home, I could be, they could be complaining about water draining off my property onto theirs, and the lot below, the new lot, would be complaining that water was draining off of that light site. It's, the road's important, but the land topography is extensive. There's over 25-foot drop from my backyard down to this property.
Yeah, I mean, to that point, I think the board at the last meeting got to the point where we came to the realization that there's no nifty engineering solution here, that this is not going to be, you know, the type of project that we would like to support. We may need to support it, and we're trying to find out if we have to support it, is certainly, and I mean, that's my position right now.
Well, this gentleman pointed out that the, that we don't, the abutters don't own to the center of the road.
But we're trying to find out.
I've always told that I do pay taxes up to the edge of the road. If that's not the case, I'd like to know who the mysterious potty is that does own it, and how they're paying taxes on it.
And we were hoping that we would be in that position, Paul is it?
Yeah.
Tonight, or at least have some direction on that, because to be quite candid with you, if this is, in fact, a road in whatever shape, form, or manner, it's going to be one that needs an opinion of council, and as a lawyer, you should realize that.
Yeah.
And then, at that point, we have to find a way, based on some past case history that was shown, shared with us, whether or not we need to go to the next step, which is to legitimately either let them develop this or not, to be quite candid with you.
Just to go on record, I'm not a lawyer. I'm a commercial real estate developer.
Okay.
And 28 Hunter, that permit needs to be investigated as part of this job, because the town can't go around issuing permits and giving up rights and then taking them back. So I'm just going on record.
I was on this board three years ago, and I don't remember that at all.
I was too, but there's definitely a long and clouded history on private ways and how to handle them in town.
And the person that previously owned this site sold it because they got turned out by this board or some board in this town.
If it's readily available there, do you mind stepping to that drawing and showing us the lot you're referring to?
The frontage here was allowed to be extended to the center of this road in order to get that permit to expand this house.
Okay.
Is that really a relatively flat lot compared to what's going on around it?
It's relatively flat from here to about here.
And your lot is where, sir? Here. Okay, yeah, understood.
Oh, so you have frontage way down the other end?
I have 200 feet on Hunter.
Okay.
And a lot of, I'm probably equal with this person's abutting for that to that site.
And Hunter goes straight up, if I remember right?
Hunter actually, a lot of people don't know, this actually ends here, because the paper road starts where the dirt starts. So right in front of these folks' houses, the pavement stops, and part of the turn in the road is dirt.
Which is one of my points that...
If you were to develop this and stop the pavement somewhere...
I'd really like somebody to explain to me how the dirt road won't, on a regular basis, wash down onto the pavement.
That'd be interesting. That would be a cart after the horse, because then we'd be dealing with engineering.
I agree.
So separate and apart, so for rather than 1% grade, less, no retaining walls, but again, we're not going into engineering right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question for John. Could you grab the mic? Because you, you're here for the applicant, right?
Yeah.
It just had, John Robbins. There's a lot of history here, obviously, and, you know, you've been around this town a long time. I don't want to elongate any type of proceeding any longer than necessary, but in absence of this, you know, the determination...
That's fine. Extension.
We just...
I'm not going to bring up any other points until we get that resolved.
And that's key, as you realize. I mean...
Yeah, I might want to point out that Bob McGee, the DPW foreman, or the head of DPW
Right.
wanted a private road, private road, 60 feet up to the property line, with the rest of the road being graded off for emergency vehicles.
But given the fact that if it was truly a private way, and traditionally, people own to the center of line of private way, and they do have rights to at least upgrade somewhat, as we were advised last, last meeting, that would be one thing, but we don't even know if it's a private way. We don't know if it's a...
Right, exactly.
An ancient road, like, maybe not unlike Toils End Road off of Grove Street. We don't know if it falls into that category or a private way, and all this other stuff is wasted energy until then.
You want us to get the legalities of it as well as you?
I, we asked Gino to, and, you know, very rarely does he ever miss, so we were surprised that we didn't have him here.
Whatever he has available would be...
Any and everything, because it may make or break
Yeah, okay.
the whole situation. But short of that, why sit to some throwing engineering?
It's just that I've read, and all this is part of Betsy's file, based on when it was approved back in 1992, that legally, this MacArthur Ave. has a right to be developed somehow, based on what I read from two different lawyers, one being Frank Gross, who used to be the town moderator, and the other one was the attorney for this piece of land that possibly could have been developed across from Hunter. And they both were based on that plan, that the subdivision was approved by the land court back in 19... 45? 47? 27?
And, you know, if that's an approved subdivision, especially if it's in land court land versus registry land, then it may be a very different circumstance, and that's prior to our zoning adoption in the town. But in absence of us having that here...
I understand, so you need an extension.
You need an extension.
Well, I need an extension, but, yeah, okay.
Right.
But you need an extension as well, because you're waiting to hear from Gino, and then we can get our information
Right.
for you, so how much time you want, or do we want? How much time do we want?
They granted us an extension to May 31st.
Already.
Well, so you'll be able to get them in at least in May sometime, right?
Do we want to keep...
Is there any other comments from the crowd before? Because I do want to just touch on a couple engineering things just up the board, you know, not for the abutters yet. Ray, did you have something to say?
Yeah.
Can you introduce yourself and address, please?
I'm Norman Mulaney, I live on 56 Lake Shore Drive. I've worked for DPW for 13 years.
For the TV.
And I drive up there with my car, and it scares the day I decide me to look down either side of the road. And I used to drive a six-wheel truck loaded down with sand, sanding in the winter. I wouldn't want to go up there on a black ice night and sand down that road. We've got four school buses that run through there with children, loaded with children. And there's nowhere stopping at the bottom. You'd go right down across Lakeshore Drive. I'd been, I'd been down on Wednesday by going towards Millers. Couldn't stop, go down the road sideways.
Those are all going to be important, and Jermaine, comments, Ray? If it comes back, and let's say this land court approves that this is, in fact, say, an ancient, a great road, or something of that ilk that allows them to, then he has to make the engineering work. So, but I do appreciate the comments. The mic.
John Robbins, Grove Street in Norfolk. Just based on whether this is, will be legal if we can develop it to a certain extent, and based on being a real estate broker in this town and surrounding towns for 35 years, and hearing complaints from people that have public roads, they can't get them refinished because towns don't have the money to do that, this is a perfect opportunity for the town, if it is legal now, I'm saying if it's legal, for the town to adopt or set a new precedent about one-lot subdivisions, common drive, private drives, something like that. Surrounding towns do that. I just want the planning board to think about that.
And...
All right? Because none of this land, other land up here can be developed. So we're only talking about one lot, and I know Mr. Griffin, was it? Had talked about, you know, this house would be going up on this side.
Keep it up this way, John, up through this...
Oh.
Sorry.
Way over here, so, I mean, his house is way up here, and I know you level off before it starts dropping. It drops into a hole on this property, which you can see right here, but the house would be going up in here.
Which I appreciate that comment, and...
Again, this is not going to make any difference if we can't develop the road.
Right. And the other thing is, you know, the first one to bring up private roadways and things like that, we've had others earlier this year even, and that's just going to be another thing on Ray's checklist as we move forward on the planning board rules and regs, so...
Well, again, it's a chance...
When you're in the, when you're in here doing some work with the assessors, stop by and see, Ray, maybe you could use some feedback.
It's just a chance to, you know, get into areas like this where that could possibly happen again, if it happens, possibly here. I don't know.
Let's find out if it's a road yet.
Okay.
When do you want to, well, oh, yes, Steve. You know what? Why don't we save, because we have a very full agenda, why don't we save the engineering comments for next time?
Yeah.
And someone make a motion to continue this?
Can I just raise one issue?
Go ahead.
Steve may have this, but I think it, there was a, there was a period of time, I don't know if you were on the board yet, when Art Spru and our town council was George Hall did a full chart of every single one of these paper roads, trying to categorize them into one type of problem or another. And so if you, I found a copy of that the other night while I was going through recycling my old planning board stuff, and didn't throw it out. So if you don't know about that, I'd be happy to give you my hard copy and find out where MacArthur Boulevard fit into that category, because he did, Art Spru was, you know, a professional engineer, former planning board member, town council. They were, it was around the time Toils End was just beginning, we were trying to figure this issue out, the way Peter describes, you know, so we'd have a holistic, a way to approach this, and it, it was too complicated to come to a resolution. But this one might be, yeah, that's not surprising. It's very complicated. But that'll be a start anyways. Do you, you know what I'm talking about? Do you know this stuff? Okay. I'll get it to, or maybe I'll scan it even for you.
Can I email it off?
Yeah.
Betsy, do you?
You know, you know that? Steve?
I do remember. I do remember the work that he put into it.
Yeah, I'll see what I...
I don't know what the final product was, though. I don't remember it.
There was a, there was a whole list, like a page and a half, that were questions we couldn't categorize.
Do we have a next meeting?
Yeah, I know, I didn't, I didn't take that.
The next meeting is in two weeks, the 29th. But we haven't gone out beyond that.
And Gino's coming back.
What about in June? I mean, not June, I'm sorry, the first week of May.
Two, first two weeks of election and town meeting.
Excuse me, what about Thursday?
No, we can do it. May 8th?
What about Thursday?
May 8th is...
Thursday, May 8th?
May, Thursday, May 8th. That's, that's April's calendar. Isn't town meeting the 13th?
Tell me when is the 13th.
So...
It's Tuesday.
Okay. I'm off the board.
Why don't we make, now that Steve's back, I'll make a motion to continue this hearing until 7:30 on May 8th?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, I won't be available, but I'm not sure that that's a problem.
I don't, are you going to have the legal stuff?
I thought we'd have it tonight with Gino.
Yeah, but when does Gino get back from Italy, and how much time? Yeah, but when does Gino get back from Italy, and how much time does it take to put together?
I didn't know he was in it.
I think he's back this week.
Oh, okay.
It's about three weeks interval.
If worse comes to worse, the applicant could in fact have some information for us, and/or we could always extend.
You're going to have to verify that information, all right?
Yeah.
So you're on town council?
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, if there's a, if there's a subdivision land plan in the Land Court, it's pretty easy to pull up, so.
Yeah, you know, it's in your file.
Right, ideally, you can always get a certified copy right out of the Boston office, Paul, I'm sure you've done that before, so. So do we not?
Don't have form.
Definitely want a quorum on the eighth, it doesn't sound like it.
I'll be there.
Yeah, you, me, and you.
I will be here.
So these, these three will be gone.
Then pick, you guys pick?
Yeah, I mean, you know, Tuesdays get difficult as well, because we have the election day, and I guess that evening is okay, right after the polls close.
Yeah, after eight o'clock.
So, that's possible, that would be the sixth. The following, the following Tuesday is a town meeting, so that's off.
So you're three weeks into May already?
So it's, it's just going to be a little tricky with the dates right now.
What about if you do it at eight o'clock on the sixth?
Are you available?
It's okay with me.
You're available?
Yeah, yeah.
Aren't you going to have an election party? Come on.
Yeah, after the meeting.
He's going to be hitting himself on the head with a hammer is what he's going to do.
So I'll amend that motion to continue this hearing until Tuesday, May sixth, at eight o'clock.
Well, Michelle, is that okay with you?
Oh, okay, yeah, I can make that.
You said the sixth one?
Sixth. Tuesday, the sixth, versus Thursday, the eighth. The eighth didn't work.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Over here.
Oh, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to continue?
Yes.
That was it?
You got a time for the...
Eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock.
You don't want May sixth?
So we'll start the meeting with the...
Okay, same as we did tonight.
Do associate members run through to election, or to June?
No, to June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, oh darn, I will be here.
We didn't tell you it's a three-year appointment.
Yeah.
I don't think I was even here for that.
I'm good?
Yeah, could you grant us an extension to May thirty-first?
Okay.
Okay, so that one's finished, I made it just in time.
Thank you.
I remember that one.
Yeah, you can say you were here. You can say you were here for it.
That is true, but I will review it.
Yeah, that's cool.
So...
All right, Steve, you're up.
The initial public hearing for T-Mobile.
Ready to read it when you are.
Don't know if they're here.
They're here.
They're here.
Oh, I'd love it, really ought. My job is out of control. She said my job is out of control, it's out of control. Eleven and a half hours today. Are you representing T-Mobile? Okay. If you want to identify yourself with the public?
Sure, my name's Amber DeBoli, I'm here as an agent for T-Mobile, and I'm here regarding their 2014 modernization project.
Point of order, sir.
It is, well, I'm just asking it to identify ourselves, and then we're going to read in the, into the record, the...
When you're ready, sir.
Oh, go right ahead.
Notice of public hearing, notice is hereby given that in accordance with Mass. General Law Section forty A, and the Norfolk zoning bylaw Section F nine A eighteen, that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April fifteenth, 2014, at seven forty-five PM in Room one-twenty-fourth of Norfolk Town Hall, one on Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts, for T-Mobile Northeast LLC, relative to a special permit to modify an existing wireless communication facility at one hundred Pond Street. The site is located in the Wireless Communications Overlay District of the C-one zoning district. Reference assessor's map nineteen block sixty-nine lot forty-three. Special permit application and other information associated with this project are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular office hours.
All righty, go right ahead.
Good evening, once again, I'm Amber, I'm an agent for T-Mobile, and I'm here regarding the existing tower located at one hundred Pond Street. T-Mobile already has antennas there, they have three antennas currently on the tower, and as far as their modernization upgrade project, they would like to swap out those three antennas for three new antennas. In order to sustain the three new antennas and the services they provide, T-Mobile also proposes to add a sixty-one O-two equipment cabinet to the existing footprint of the cellular tower, as well as a hybrid cable along the interior of the tower, in order to, once again, sustain the functions of those new antennas.
Have, have you seen any plans for this in advance?
No.
No? Do you have anything that you could present to us, that would let us know what all the change, what all the changes are?
Do you have a full set of plans?
Yeah, we have these, yeah.
Oh, no, I wasn't told that I needed to get some large set of plans, I'm sorry.
Well, we got this set, right?
Well, we do have a set, sometimes it's hard to see things on these.
So are we looking at a modification hearing?
Yes, it's a site modification.
Yeah.
They're not doing anything to modify the existing tower, or that would affect any of the other providers co-located, just merely swapping out antennas and adding an equipment cabinet and a wire between the two.
I, I remember the original special permit, are you going to be following some of the conditions that were in the original special permit on this one?
Whatever was originally agreed upon, you know, T-Mobile will still be in compliance with that.
All right. So, other than just swapping out the antennas, and putting a different type of cable in, and, it's a different box, or is it an additional box in the bottom?
Equipment box.
It's an additional equipment box.
Okay, well, there's already one there that's why it was out.
Right, it's within the existing footprint for the tower, so it won't, you know, it, there's no need to expand anything.
All right.
So, well, so we're talking about a replacement of hardware, something's being removed and other things being added?
Exactly, in terms of the antennas, they're also...
Could you describe that for us, in terms of what, what's being removed, you know, where it's located, how large it is, how high it is, that type of thing?
Sure, just a moment, please.
Yeah, here's the...
All right, so if you're more of a visual person, that's depicted on page A two of the plans.
Yep.
Based on what the plans say, the tower, the existing tower is two hundred twelve feet tall, and the antennas that we're discussing right now are approximately one hundred forty-one feet in the air. Their additional antennas co-located on the tower, as you can see, there's some, there's a small little gray set below the ones in black that we're discussing right now.
That's where the box is, the dashed one?
As for the boxes, it's at the very bottom, at the very bottom of the monopole depicted on the, on page A two, it says P in parentheses, and it says RBS, I believe sixty-one O-two cabinet, that's exactly where it would be.
P for proposed, E for existing?
Correct. So, and, you know, in terms of the antennas, they're going to be located in the same places the, as the old antennas, they're going to be like in size, the hybrid cable is one five-eighths of an inch, so it's not particularly large or cumbersome, and like I said, that equipment cabinet is going to be located right at the bottom in the existing footprint of the tower.
So those antennas that are going to be replaced, that's at this one hundred and forty-one foot elevation, where there's a box, right, there's a rectangle, is that...
Yes, that's correct.
Am I looking at the right place? Okay.
Does the new equipment box require more power?
I don't have any information regarding that, but we have to have everything signed off by a professional engineer in addition to an electrician, so whatever the, the needs of that box are, they'll be taken care of and fully in compliance with all existing laws.
Is it, do you think an equipment box is a source of power, or do you think it's storing?
No, no, it requires power, I'm saying, it may require power.
So what are you thinking of, plumbing, or...
No, I'm thinking of whether they need to run new lines in off the street, or have they got enough power in there already, or whatever, you know?
That would have, if we need to run new lines to the street, you know, that would have been depicted in the plans, and arguably, there may need to be some kind of easements involved, so that would already be depicted. So there's, there's no indication that we're in need of that, and there is an existing cabinet there, so whatever electric supply that cabinet is running off of is apparently sufficient for this one as well.
Is there, I take it as a fence around the base of it?
Yes.
On page A two, Amber?
Yes.
On the left side, where it depicts the existing tower, bottom left, the existing PPC cabinet, it looks like it's substantially larger than the P on the right proposed. Am I seeing that right, or...
You may or may not be, there's an aerial view on another page, just a moment, I only have one hand.
Yeah, we can't figure that one out either.
Well, on G one, it, one box is a BTS units, the other one's the RBS, and those look as though they're approximately the same size, unless one's from the side and one's from the...
This was, what was confusing, you see the, like, the gray here?
And then there's this.
There is a power, on that same G one, Walter, there is, there are power lines shown, but they look like they're mostly grounding wires, unless, if you can read them more clearly.
Well, page A one contains an aerial depiction of the equipment located in the footprint of the tower, once again, that's page A one, so there, they're pointing at the existing RBS twenty-one O-six cabinet to remain. It appears that, based on that image, the cabinets are very much like in size.
So those cabinets have a door or something that swings open on them, is that what that...
Yes, that's what the arc is, it shows the, the opening of the door, so this one kind of has more French doors, whereas the, the existing cabinet has more of a wider swinging door.
Swings, and it swings.
So that's reasonable.
Here's, here's the schematic on the electric. Looks like there's enough, I would have done something.
All right, let's, let's just go through and see if everyone can extinguish all of their questions, because this, this one looks like a no-brainer to me. So, Walter, do you have any additional questions?
No additional questions, no.
Jeff, do you?
Andrea, do you have any questions? Michelle?
The only thing that sticks out in my mind is, you know, another tower that we've been reviewing recently, and it was things with like landscaping, and maintenance, and care around, that we were having, you know, trouble with, and that was a different provider that was coming in, so I think when you mentioned previous conditions, I guess I would just want to make sure that there's nothing else going on here that we'd want to touch base, since we have the applicant right in front of us.
Okay.
But otherwise, I don't have any questions on what's being proposed.
Because I don't think I've ever been up there.
I've driven, I've driven, oh, go ahead, Amber, go ahead.
In terms of maintenance for these antennas, there's really not a whole lot that's going to be going on, there's going to be a van or a truck going out about once a month to check and make sure they're functioning appropriately, and the facilities in compliance with all existing laws and agreements, but other than that, unless, you know, something unforeseeable may occur, there really won't be any more foot traffic, or any other issues regarding that.
I, I think, Michelle, to answer your question, when we were talking about the other tower right here in the town center, you know, that was a hypersensitive issue, because you're literally sitting in the middle of forty-four living units, in a main thoroughfare in two other neighborhoods of the town, and it wasn't very well cared for. Thankfully, that's been addressed. What you're dealing with up here at Pond Street, obviously, is Shire Industrial Park, other industrial sites that are going to be surrounded, I don't think that we're facing the same aesthetic issues, for lack of a better term.
It wouldn't hurt, I mean, even if we closed it tonight, we can take a drive-by, and if there's something wrong, we can condition it.
And put it in the conditions, but, right.
I think it's a good idea, you know, just in terms of the, you know, the gate, and you know, things being locked, and proper signage, and stuff like that, I mean, you know, you get kids wandering or something.
Which is fine, and I'm sure it wouldn't be anything that would be overwhelming for these people to address if necessary, and only if necessary. I do have a question, in case this comes up with other providers, though, because I understand that many of the mobile providers are actually changing for long-term to short-term repeater type of antennas, which is probably one of the reasons this is coming about. I was just curious, if you knew, from your industry, do you work for T-Mobile, or...
We're a subcontractor, there's kind of a lot of...
Okay, whether, whether this may be something that's going to be coming up again on this tower, maybe by another provider, because of changes of technology, et cetera?
I would say yes, each generational change in terms of the technology requires an update to hardware. Unfortunately, the, the technology's evolving much more quickly than the, than the infrastructure, but do you remember all those three G commercials?
Right.
Now, three G is old news, now it's four G LTE. Four G is just basically fourth generation cellular technology, so now the hardware has to catch up. Once five G comes out, you know, it's something that is going to be addressed by all the providers, they're going to need more hardware and the infrastructure to be able to sustain the, the sort of traffic and data that would be required for that.
Okay, yeah, I, I guess that, I was just curious, as how soon this would become about, that's all.
What does RBS stand for?
I don't know.
Permit denied.
Should have known that, should have known that. Okay, well, are you done with yours? Peter, are you done? I'm a sec. Okay, does anyone want to, want to make a motion to...
See if it's a major or minor modification.
This is a special permit.
Yeah, it's a special permit, yeah. It's a special permit to modify. So, I mean, it's already been appetized, then, so it doesn't matter.
Want to make a motion?
Special permit to modify.
Well, to close the hearing, we can, we can get it drafted by Gino, a decision drafted by Gino, and then we can vote on it.
I guess the only question is, I mean, I think, you know, what you're hearing is general support, but these conditions and such, should we not at least give PSC the opportunity to go through this? I'm not anticipating problems, but, you know, if we close the public hearing, what would, could be an issue for us, right?
I mean, they, they know that these are existing requirements, and that's why I had said we can always condition it.
Right, I mean, we're talking about changing antennas, a hundred and ten feet up, is that what you said?
A hundred and forty.
And a couple small cabinets, I, I think adding the burden of engineering review on top of that would be, I don't know, I'm, I'm not a fan of that.
I mean, this is very much a routine change, you know, I've, you know, I've come to a lot of these hearings and stuff, and they're usually pretty in and out in terms of the findings. On occasions, towns have preferences about maybe the colors of the antennas, in order to match other antennas or the tower, whether they're gray or black, but other than that, there really hasn't, you know, been any conditionary grants.
I know this is going to put you on the spot, but if you don't happen to know the special permit number that we're modifying, we...
No, I do not.
...when it was issued? I'm sure we can find that information, but it would be nice to...
It's done by the zoning board, so this is a new special permit.
Okay.
It is.
It is.
Wouldn't it be nice to have that in hand to modify?
Yeah, it's going to have to be reviewed by, by Gino to compare it with everything that's drafted here.
I'm sure I can get a copy of the original special permit for this issue.
Okay, okay.
Amber, when was the planned upgrade?
When do you want to do the work? Oh, as soon as possible, as soon as we get this, I believe there's an appeal period, is there one?
Or special permit.
Okay, sure, then we'll record it, get the building permit ready, submit it to the contractor, and get it taken care of quickly, since it's such a routine.
Okay, so it's something that you want to act on sooner rather than later?
Absolutely.
So...
Looking at number twenty-eight here, looks like it's dangling here, there doesn't, doesn't properly end the paragraph twenty-eight.
General notes?
Yes, it says all sewer, water, gas, electric, and other utilities which interfere with the execution of the work shall be removed and their cap, plugged or otherwise disconnected.
I would submit to you that twenty-two, sorry, rather, twenty-eight is a dovetail into twenty-nine, I believe they might have just broken the paragraphs up, just to make it a little bit easier to digest, especially with the small typeface, but driveway or gravel shall be graded to a uniform slope, it just, it seems like it flows, and that makes a great deal of sense.
Yeah, that's right.
That's true. Same thing happens at the end of twenty-nine. Same thing happens at the end of 29.
So, so Betsy, when, when Gino gets back, have him take a look at this and compare it with the original special permit for this, okay? Because that'll all be conditioned if there's, if there's any observations that are, that have not been taken care of in the original special permit. Okay, are we ready?
So do we, we want to still close?
We're going to close, and, but we, we will still be able to have Gino review all the, the special permit as part of what has to be done.
So you want me to make that motion, then?
Sure.
To move that we close the public hearing for T-Mobile 100 Pond Street special permit to modify existing wireless communication facility, followed by review by Gino and a review of the site conditions.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You'll have to wait for your approval, because we have to gather all that information and have it reviewed, and we'll write a decision on it.
Okay, do you know how long that might be?
When's our next meeting? May 6th?
29th.
April 29th.
April 29th?
Oh.
Okay, that's fine.
As soon as I have it done and filed with the town clerk, I'll send you a copy.
Thank you, Amber.
I'm going to hop off for a moment.
Oh, okay.
I spoke to the board earlier, Steve. I'm not going to be able to vote on the next two issues. The 8:45 appointment's been postponed, so I'd like to...
You don't want to weigh in on any comments from the next two?
Go home and recuperate, given the choice.
How'd you recuperate?
I had surgery last Thursday, and I just got back to work, so...
Yeah, it doesn't look as though that, unless you wanted to be here for 242 Dedham Street.
242, what, is 242, is...
And Pondville Plaza.
Discuss status of, I don't need to discuss the status.
All right, so, going to continue the hearing for 106 Main Street. There's been a request for a continuance to May 6th. So does someone want to make a motion to continue this to May 6th at...
How long do you think?
We have something in eight, we have to say eighteenth.
Eighteen, yeah, eight fifteen?
Because they might not come up with anything on McCarthy yet.
All right.
Yeah, I move to continue the public hearing for 106 Main Street, site plan to the meeting on May 6th at 8:15.
All those in favor? Oh, second.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, so, yeah, it is, it is within time, I just had to check the clock, yeah. There's been a request for a continuance of the public hearing for 108 Main Street, so if someone could make a motion to put that out to 8:30 or 8:20 on the same day?
All right, I move to continue the public hearing for 108 Main Street, site plan to May 6th at 8:30, is that what we said?
8:20.
8:20.
8:20. Quick hearing for the...
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, we're ready to discuss the status of 242 Dedham Street and Pondville Plaza.
Good evening.
Ah, good evening.
Attorney Louis Cacavero for Mr. Quagliari, prepared to discuss the two projects in question, but hopeful that we may have reached the end of a long road here.
Oh, good.
I give you a very brief summary, our position, and then certainly feel any questions that I have. When we were here last, in your own meeting room, the board voted to endorse plans for 242 Dedham, but to withhold the delivery of them to Mr. Quagliari until such time as a drainage report that was being prepared by American Engineering was submitted and reviewed by your consulting engineers. That's happened. In addition, a replacement drainage report has been done for the Pondville Plaza project, submitted for review by your engineers. Comments were made, there were discussions between American and Mr. Houston with regard to that report and, and the content of some of the proposed corrections, alterations, changes, and the like. Much of that conversation, as I understand it, was driven by whether or not these were items that were originally waived, omitted, versus things that needed, that weren't waived or omitted the first time around that needed to be corrected. So my understanding from Mr. American this afternoon is, as recently as this afternoon, final conversations occurred, and that a number of, of the concerns noted by Mr. Houston are either, he's, he's satiated at this point, I, I think, or at least that's been represented to me. So we are hopeful that we're in a position to retrieve from you the executed MyLARS for 242 Dedham. We already have the MyLARS for Pondville, and whatever final technical vote you need to take to accept these new drainage reports as minor modifications to become part of your record, if, if that still needs to be done, that, that can be done as well. I'm hopeful that we're at the finish line on this. Just one last piece of information for the, for the benefit of the board, Mr. Quagliari has received a written proposal to purchase 242 Dedham. It comes with a very stringent timetable that just came in today, so he is indeed most anxious to try to move forward with finalizing what has been a long and tough road. And one administrative question or, or matter too, and I think we may need to request an extension on the, the permits that we've received from you, because we're now approaching an anniversary of them. So I'm hopeful that that's just a ministerial thing that we can address as well tonight.
Well, which one do you need the extension for?
He needs the extensions on the site plan modification decision number 2013-02 and the special permit decision 2013-03.
What property is that?
Which, which property?
For 242 Dedham Street.
For 242 Dedham.
They are expiring on or around May 1st.
And we have zoning relief, we're seeking an extension on tomorrow night for that property as well. And that's obviously a condition of our ability to sell to our prospective buyers.
All right. I'd like to deal with Pondville Plaza first. I think that's the easiest of the two. I think, I may be wrong. Is there any comments that, that you've heard from Tom about Pondville Plaza and how secure he feels as to the changes are that have been made?
I think Pondville Plaza is under the purview of the Board of Health, that's, that's his position.
Well, there's an open septic plan, which is the Board of Health jurisdiction, but as it relates to this board's jurisdiction, I think is the question.
Right, this was the drainage one. Not familiar with that one?
I don't know that we received a response letter from the engineer for either of these projects.
Yes. I remember quite specifically last meeting that Tom said that the only issue on Pondville Plaza was, in fact, a Board of Health issue, and the applicant had forwarded a drainage report just to give it to the board. You know, these are, these are ones that are already unfiled, and from what I understand was, has been adjudicated further in the courts.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's my recollection as well.
So if it's the Board of Health, we shouldn't be involved.
We took our, we took our final action on that project, and then subsequent to that time, there were some concerns about the qualifications and the direction of some of the activities, and so, you know, I still was of the opinion that our work had been completed unless we were to, I guess, you know, state otherwise, and I, I don't know that anyone on this board has said that, you know, we have additional work related to Pondville Plaza. My understanding was with the Board of Health at that point.
Right out of the, out of Houston's mouth? It's a Board of Health issue?
Probably, yeah.
It was just calculations that were involved, is that correct? Now, those calculations have been submitted and everything else?
And Rick American signed and sealed them. Rick American's known to this board, he's worked with Mr. Houston in the past, and once again, we offered to do that drainage report, just to try to show, demonstrate to you that the drainage as proposed is acceptable and compliant, and likewise with the survey work.
So, Michelle, do you have any other comments on this? Is there anyone with any objection to assigning the plans?
They did that, though, I think.
Well, I think the plans are assigned, unfiled with the registry.
I thought that there was something that we held back.
No, this is the, we...
You're confusing Leos, that's next.
This is the meeting that we had on a Friday night, because, if I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, but this was a Friday night meeting, because you had, it was a...
We were going to lose the purchase.
Yeah, so there was a transaction that was imminent, we scheduled a Friday. So, in this room, and we did, my recollection, we did sign the, sign the MyLARS, so we endorsed the plan.
And subsequently...
December 3rd, I think, or something.
Subsequently, we, we submitted new surveys by Mr. O'Driscoll. You met him in this room on a later date. You questioned him about his work, Mr. Houston reviewed it, was satisfied that it was distinctly different, which I guess made him happy, that it, it was representative of new survey work, new field work. So I think the last step for Pondville is for you folks, I respectfully suggest, to accept the new survey and accept the new drainage report, and I think that might necessitate a vote as a minor modification. Is that the pigeonhole we've put this in?
Well, we've already signed the MyLARS.
You have, but...
Right. But I, I see nothing wrong with accepting what he's asking us to accept, which is to accept the...
I don't either. I think it's time to move on in this one.
Yes, it is.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion. To accept the new drainage report for Pondville Plaza, do you have a date on that?
I'll dig one out while you're crafting your motion.
Well, actually, let me, let me, let me make a motion first to, to call this a minor modification. Okay, I'd like to vote that the, the changes to the original topographical plan for Pondville Plaza and the drainage calculations changes are a minor modification. Do I have a second on that? Okay. All those in favor?
We need to let Betsy catch up with it when she gets back.
Do you want to update the drainage report?
Yeah, I just want, I, I just want...
And the survey drawings.
Yeah, and the survey drawings. I want to, I want to put the date in for the motion.
And I would reference American in everything, given the history. Very specific.
Well, we were just, I mean, the drainage report's going to have a date on it, so, and...
Well, it's got all the names on it, too.
Right, it's stamped by him. Did you get cold?
It was noisy, oh, couldn't hear.
It's humid.
It's only April.
Yeah.
Michelle's still got her North Face jacket with her.
We have 12 boxes on our street, two of them up for sale the last two months, sold on the first weekend.
It's a hot market.
This was on last week, we already talked about this, right? This should be removed, or is he coming back?
I don't know, was anything to come back, was there? I mean, he just...
He had some work to do.
Yeah, he had a lot of work to do.
He had the layout, and whether he could do something with, there was a easement there, if you will. Well, it wasn't easy, it was someone else's property, but he could, he could change his layout, his lot layout if he was...
You don't remember that one?
Really draw it for you.
You're the one that was recommending curving the road and going around the wetlands, and you don't remember that, huh?
We're talking to something.
No, no, this is up by the airport.
That helps? Yeah, that helps.
The drawing is terrible.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, the, the drainage counts prepared by American for Pondville Plaza were dated, signed, and stamped by him on February 17, 2014.
February 17?
17, 2014.
And the, the site plan, I mean, the, the original, the original plan that was reproduced?
The, the replacement survey?
Yeah, yeah.
By Mr. O'Driscoll? Did you ask him to get that?
Was dated 11/21/2013.
11/21/2013.
That's the one that they endorsed on December 6th.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Weren't there new survey plans after that, though?
What, wasn't there?
Not for Pond...
Not for Pondville.
No.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the, the new survey drawings and, that are dated 11/21/2013 for Pondville Plaza, and the drainage calculations for Pondville Plaza dated 2/17/2014.
I just, I just want to go on record, I'm pretty sure we adopted those survey drawings
in our December 3rd motion, but it doesn't hurt, I guess, to do a second.
No, it doesn't. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, one of those is out of the way.
We're done with Pondville, yay.
Yeah, Pondville is done.
So similarly, I think we're in a, the same posture with 242 Dedham. We have a set of replacement survey drawings, and we have a new drainage report by Mr. American as well. And you've endorsed those MyLARS, but those are still in your possession.
No.
I can, if you want, my, my memory, I think, on this one is, is pretty clear. So, so we endorse them contingent on, basically, the parties discussing and coming to some acceptable outcome with PSC in terms of the engineering details, and so that's really the last business, I think, just for what it's had with that project, was that conversation.
I thought it was just that overlay that, that we were talking about it. Do you have any other comments, Dave, that, other than...
Well, we issued our report on the drainage calculations from the 12th of March. We issued our report on the 18th, we haven't...
Yeah, that was the 19 points that was brought up, Dave, that we went through at the last meeting. And I thought at that time, you know, American and Houston were going to get together and go over this, but, you know, we specifically said not to add in things that had been previously waived or, you know, passed by the board, and many of these items were, in fact, triggered by add-ons, and that's the way I read it, with my limited knowledge on the drainage. So my question is, us as the board, or a decision-maker, it's not something to be just arbitrarily handed off to the engineer if we feel that he's overstepping, and I feel, for the record, I think he is overstepping. For whatever reason, it may come out, but I don't know why.
Well, let me ask the question, because Steve, you were the one that suggested that there shouldn't be anything new.
Correct.
Unless, obviously, if the drainage report is a new document that PSC had not had an opportunity to review, I mean, there, there may be some legitimate items is where we had left off, and that was my thinking, that there was. So I guess the question is, you had made a comment that there was some conversation with American, was that with PSC today?
With Mr. Houston, between Mr. American and Mr. Houston directly. I'll, I'll quote Mr. American's email to me from earlier today. Mr. Houston suggested to me some of his comments might go away this evening, so that discussion that occurred this afternoon seemed to satisfy Mr. Houston that a number of his technical concerns have been addressed and/or a number of his concerns with new things that shouldn't be brought up in keeping with what Mr. Chipman just indicated.
But now I'm confused even more. If they might go away, what is it that's...
They were supposed to meet, I believe, Monday morning. We got an email this afternoon, sort of, you know, saying that...
So, that discussion that occurred this afternoon seemed to satisfy Mr. Houston that a number of his technical concerns have been addressed, and/or a number of his concerns with new things that shouldn't be brought up, in keeping with what Mr. Chipman just indicated.
But, now I'm confused even more. If they might go away, what is it that's?
They were supposed to meet, I believe, Monday morning. We got an email this afternoon, sort of, you know, saying that, I don't know that Tom is comfortable with that position until he sits down with Mr. American.
Oh, so they never got together?
No.
I was told they talked today.
They spoke today on the phone, but they were gonna meet on, I think, Monday morning.
They're supposed to meet this Monday or next Monday.
Next. It's coming.
You know, this is a, this is a plan where, when it was passed and reviewed for many, many hours by the consulting engineer, okay, as, and I paraphrase, one of the best plans he had seen, pull it up on Norfolk Cable. This is a plan that was reviewed by our engineer and approved back then. So, you know, the one thing, we haven't talked about this, and I'm not going back to ancient history with bad licensing and engineers, I'm talking about a service that we provided here, the engineering service for the applicant, is, why was it so great then and so bad now? Because I would think that a review engineering should stand on its own. I would like that question answered. I'm just gonna ask if there's anyone who would object to releasing those documents.
Absolutely not.
Would not object.
I would not object to it.
Well, you, Jeff.
Can you be more specific as to what?
Well, we've already signed them. We just haven't turned them over to them. And I, I agree with Peter, that they've done their due diligence on this, and.
With all due respect, twice. We did it the first time, it was approved, and we did it again as a courtesy to the board, in consideration of all the issues.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's unfortunate that the folks, folks didn't get together and do what should have been done, and, you know, I'm curious as to why that didn't happen, but, you know, I'm not sure we're gonna really get a full understanding of that here tonight.
Right. You know, here's what I'm seeing, Jeff, just for public digestion. We haven't been requiring soil borings on many sites. All of a sudden, I mean, we threw up a 36,000 square foot building, all right, in 184 parking spots, one of the largest things that were put up in this town, did it in two meetings, and we didn't so much as require soil borings. Next thing you know, there's soil borings being required, which, if you don't have a working knowledge of that, that's a nice $10,000 to $15,000 payday for someone, okay? Secondly, is this, is, why is it so incumbent doing it now, on a site, one tenth the size, and then it triggers all these other, 18 other comments? I just feel that we are going down the wrong road here for the wrong reasons. If this guy's got someone that's gonna buy this place and build a building, that is what we are here for. Well, I go along with you on that one.
Well, I'm not through yet, Steve.
Oh, oh.
Okay, I didn't say that I wouldn't release the documents, but in terms of process, I mean, there's been a number of things that weren't really done the way that they should be done, and I've talked about that in the past. And now, here, we have another situation where conversations shouldn't take, should've taken place that didn't. Not good. So, I'm just saying that, you know, we're gonna have to do this better next time. If we have things in the regs that it says are required, then we better either change the regs, or, you know, or enforce what's in the regulations.
Or waive them like we did the first time.
Or enforce them.
Or waive them like we did the first time.
Peter, why are they there?
I don't know, I wasn't there when they were putting too many regs in place.
So, you're making my point. So, anyway, so I have no problem releasing the, the drawings, but I just think, as a board, we just need to do things differently, and I think this is something that the applicant has spoke about.
It was a situation where we were caught off guard on this one.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, the irregularities with the improper qualifications, and there were fraudulent engineering, you know, stamps and such involved.
But we paid to have a review for us.
I agree. I'm just saying that it's, the way the process should work, it has a beginning and it has an end. The process with this project, as well as Pondville, it was a circular process that got very strange and difficult for us to follow, you know, our regulations and protocol, and that's my point. So, I'm sure the applicant, you know, didn't feel very good about that. There was additional cost here to the applicant, and I'm not sure, at the end of the day, that what we have as a final product is really what we should have, should have had and normally do have. So, I will release the drawings, but we need to do things differently, is my point.
And I'm in total agreement with you, that we need to change the regs.
Michelle.
So, by memory, I thought that we already accepted the new topo survey. I wanna say we did that a few meetings ago. So, really, the, the last piece that we were looking at was the drainage calcs, because we've, we've accepted new drawings, we just never formally, I think, accepted those drainage calcs. So, that's, to me, seems to be the last piece of the pie on this. I, I do agree, I think it's unfortunate that it couldn't have happened before tonight. I don't think that there's been anything that's been above and beyond that would really cause a huge red flag. It does feel, though, that with the way this process gone, everything should be done as much as possible to just try and make it continue to go smoothly, and it feels like it continues to have hiccups, which is unfortunate.
All right. Question down back? A comment?
Take out the mic, please.
Just take a microphone there.
John Weddleton, Seven Trail Sideway. When I was watching this project in its first stage with Dover Land Surveying, there was a list of requests for waivers by the applicant. PSC Engineering and their comments back talked about the wave for the soil testing. Steve had asked Tom, or somebody did, his thoughts on that, and Tom said, quote unquote, "As a general rule, you usually waive soil testing." Now, number one, personally, working out in the field, I would never suggest that you waive soil testing. When this first plan was done, there was no test borings, and the drainage was done according to consistency in the area. This is a small drainage area on a small piece of land tying into town drainage. Now, when the advent of this whole problem came up with the registers and the stamps, et cetera, now a new set of criteria was established. And the new set of criteria on the same project was to do soil testing. The soil testing and the advent on that, after this had already been done, has now created, I believe, and, and Dave can correct me if I'm wrong, has created a number of items on drainage, mostly evolving from the extra soil testing. I would submit that every project that you waive soil testing on, if you went back and had it, you would find similar discrepancies. I also believe in a small site like this, where the, the drainage, which is a very inexact science, is off 15% or 20% or whatever, with the limited drainage flowing into town system, I don't think it's a matter of, a matter of causing flooding to any of the budding properties. So, I think, basically, when you talk about not wanting to go through things that were already agreed upon, just by this new soil testing, this new drainage review, these new set of comments, all evolving around a process that you already waived, I think, is creating the problem. And personally, as I said, when you do drainage in, in the field, some of these minor things on small, small sites, I don't even think are relevant. So, I think if you wanna be consistent to this applicant, where you waived it, and I remember the meeting well, because I was kinda surprised that soil testing were waived one project after another. But that being said, and since it was, I, I think that now to go back on the same project with new circumstances, and creating a new list of issues, with a new set of costs and reviews, et cetera, I don't think is fair to anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. So, does somebody wanna make a motion to, well, we, we need to accept the drainage, the new drainage calcs. Do you have a date on those?
Do we have a date on those?
By the way, while you were out looking for the other date.
Hold on.
There was a minor, a motion made that we accept the drainage calcs and the other document as a minor modification.
Thank you.
Which you didn't catch, I don't think.
I'll catch it on the tape, I hope.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. So, we'll have to make it a minor modification to accept those, that drainage report, and then, just.
Well, we haven't released them yet, is it? But we haven't released our decision yet as a modification, or is it a finalization?
We have to make a decision that, that accepting those is, is part of a minor modification.
Because it's a change to our original decision that we voted.
And we finalized that decision?
When we signed them.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and then, we're just going to vote to release the documents. If that's acceptable to the board.
So, do you wanna vote for a minor modification? You can do that.
Chairman, February 17th again.
Oh, excellent. So, would somebody else like to make that motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion for a minor modification to Leo's Landing 242 Dedham Street.
To?
Well.
What's the minor modification?
To accept.
To accept the drainage report dated?
2/17/2014.
I thought it was always a separate vote.
Well.
That we vote with a minor modification.
Well, we're telling what the minor modification is, then we vote on accepting the report.
Okay, so you're, you're combining. Okay, that's fine.
And now, we have to make a motion to accept?
We have to accept his first, we haven't finished that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, we have to accept the drainage report. You have to state what the minor modification is, then you have to accept it.
Makes sense to me.
That's fine. It's, I make a motion that we accept the drainage report dated?
February 17.
February.
17.
February 17, 2014, prepared by American Engineering.
I just want Betsy to confirm it, 'cause my notes say the 17th, but she's checking the original filing right now.
I thought it was done later.
Your notes say?
My notes say the 17th, but I want, I want.
Just wait a second.
I wanna hear it right from the horse, 'cause she's gonna pull the report itself.
Do you get paid for this?
Yeah. Not enough, but I do. Take your time.
Tough crowd, tough crowd up here.
It's his wife's birthday, too, he's in trouble.
Yeah. She's not happy with me tonight. I did pay the taxes, I told her that was her present this year.
Oh, does that make her happier?
That makes her very happy, actually.
We have a decision for that. Okay.
Sorry, can't find it.
The drainage report?
Well, I had given it to Tom Houston, but I thought I had a copy in my records.
I'm almost certain, Mr. Chairman, it's the same date, 'cause they were generated.
The 2/17, 2014. Okay.
Well, the motion's been made.
Okay, has it been completed?
It hasn't been completed, but.
All, did someone second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, we have to vote to release the documents that were already signed. All the.
That's the last.
The site plan documents. It's not just mylars, though, right?
It's the mylar, it's just the mylars.
Oh, it is just the mylars. Okay. Wanna make that motion?
I make a motion that we release the mylars to the applicant for Leo's Landing 242 Dedham Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, they need an extension.
For what?
For 242 Dedham Street.
Oh, what's the extension for?
For the special, two special permits.
It's, it's the site plan modification decision, number 2013-02.
Yeah.
And the special permit decision, 2013-03.
When do we need to extend them to? When do we try to extend them to?
Yeah.
One-year extension?
Yeah, that's normal.
Yeah, one-year extension.
So, to May 2015?
Well, what's the date on? It's, it's May 1st, right?
May 1st, right?
May 1st is the current expiration.
So, May 1st, 2015?
Normally, do it on the date.
Oh, a year from the date? April 15th, 2015?
Well, we can go to, I just wanna make sure it doesn't fall on a Saturday or something.
You got it?
Yeah. May 1st is a Friday.
Okay.
Perfect.
So, you wanna do that?
Do you wanna do it on a Friday when the town hall's closed, or do you wanna go to Monday?
Well, it's only for commencement.
Right. But we wanna make sure that all of our, you know, Ts are crossed.
I wanna make sure there's a building there by September.
Yeah, we do. But we, we also wanna make sure that the town hall's not closed on a day if you run into a problem at that point. So, make it May 4th, 2015.
Okay. And the first one was site plan or special permit?
Site plan modification.
Site plan modification and special permit, okay. I move to extend the site plan modification decision, 2013-02, from May 1st, 2014 to May 4th, 2015. Do we have to do each one separately?
Yeah.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to extend the special permit decision, 2013-03, from May 1st, 2014 to May 4th, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think.
I think as well.
Date?
I think therefore I am.
The date on the mylar, should I date it, the date that you actually endorsed them, or today's date?
I would, I would put the date that we endorsed them as the date that they should be, it should be dated, if that was the date we signed.
March 18th.
Either way, he's gonna get them filed. You're getting these filed, right? You're not holding them. Okay. That's fine.
I'll date them.
All right.
We've substituted in the O'Driscoll.
We did that last meeting, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what we're gonna record.
Right.
That's what you want us to record?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, so.
And, and the extensions will probably get written up, and we'll have to record those as well, so if you'd be kind enough to let us know.
That just gets filed at the town clerk's office, I think.
I think I'd like to record them at the registry.
Sure.
Because the decisions themselves are at the registry already.
Well, that's something Betsy can handle on the off.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was March 18th was the date that they endorsed those.
All right, let's move on.
So, those plans are ready to move?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Give us something like that.
Good luck.
Own me a wife.
All right, now, now, Betsy, this Chris Nation to discuss Pacilla Ave. Do you have additional information for us?
Well, I have another sketch to expand upon where we left off. If I could make a few minutes of your time, it'd be very.
Yeah, yeah, come on up. But I, I thought that you were going to be researching some things on that also.
Were there other things involved, like a burno pool or something like that?
You're gonna need a mic, too.
If I, if I may.
You're gonna need a mic, sorry.
Yeah.
Right over there by Betsy. There's a mic.
The orange light is on, Chris. Is it another? John?
Okay, well, last, I'm Chris Nation, Norfolk Development and Construction LLC. Where we last left off, I came in.
The light needs to be turned on.
When we were last here, what I was showing you guys was this picture here, and it was showing that we had three parcels, highlighted in blue, off of Pacilla Ave, Paper Street. So, three house lots, in our view, we need access. We all talked, we looked at it. My major point was to make sure that the board was open to ideas, you were willing to look at plans, concepts, and figure out how to get this done. So, we did brainstorm, we asked lots of questions, and we dissected it a little bit, and then, basically, we dispersed. So, I took from that that I should have someone draw something further, for you to really look at something. So, I'm gonna flip this over, and that's what I'm gonna look at. Now, this, this had three parcels separate. I've taken this one out of the equation, so we're gonna just focus on these two. I've taken this one out of the equation, so we're going to just focus on these two. I did email Betsy. I'm not sure if she forwarded that. So, you, you did have this in an email with a, you know, nine and a half by eleven printed out.
They have copy in their back of the phone.
But here we are. So, Priscilla Ave, River Road. And we've had Gary and Howlon draw up this road, cul-de-sac. Total length, four hundred and eighty-three feet. He has it represented here, twenty-four feet wide.
Private jet.
Gets two hundred feet, well, gets two hundred and thirty feet of frontage on this lot, two hundred feet of frontage on this lot.
Is that measured around the cul-de-sac? I think, isn't it supposed to be a straight line on the radius or something along those lines? Isn't it?
Or the length?
The, the frontage calculator. I don't think the frontage can be calculated along the-
Curve?
The edge of the right-of-way. Isn't it, do you remember that? This is a big mean, a Gino thing. Gino catches this all the time. That's why I remember it.
Yeah, yeah, didn't it happen over Cleveland over there, right?
Yeah. What, what's the frontage on, on the, the left lot? Because it looks to me like you're, you're calculating along the whole length of the cul-de-sac. Is that right?
Right, there's, you know, um, it's not clear here, but it's, it's roughly fifty feet here and a hundred and fifty feet here.
What about if you went straight across? So, it's-
Just straight across the cul-de-sac.
That's our-
On a straight line basis, from the corner, yes.
Our consultant isn't here, but he would, he would catch this, so we'll, we'll let you know in advance.
You'd be a hundred and forty-five feet strong from, from here to here, straight line.
And sorry, what is the, uh, what's the zoning district there?
Two hundred feet.
That oblong area enclosed by the dash line is, is what?
This here?
Yeah.
Wetland.
Is that a wetland or a vernal pool? Is that a vernal pool?
It's, it's indicated here as a wetland.
That's the end.
And the dark line is your buffer for it or your no build, no build?
Correct, the note would be a no build.
Oh, so that line is the no build line?
The dark line.
Correct, but in, in, in pushing this further, it would exceed five hundred feet.
What, uh, what's in the space between those two lots?
This is, this is another paper street that has never been-
Okay.
Noted as Donald Road.
How wide is it?
The right-of-way is forty feet.
No, Donald.
That is forty feet as well.
Oh, okay.
As is, I think, Lake Shore, um, River Road is forty feet. Public way, I don't know, I'm not certain of the pavement measurements there.
Now, these are all, these all have the right square footage for the zoning district.
The lots themselves?
Yeah.
These are less than an acre. It's forty thousand six seventy here. This one, because of this, it brings it down to forty thousand five hundred and twenty-three. And I've been advised that that's not the issue in that these lots are created in the fifties. So, they should, they should remain a lot. We have to find safe, adequate access to them.
So, are those, those are existing lots that size or are those a compilation of lots?
Yeah.
They're-
They're, they're the combination, yeah.
Is it?
The old camp lots.
You lose your-
From the fifties.
So, I don't know, I'm not sure if you maintain your right to the undersized lot once you start adding them together or not.
Once they're changed.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I haven't, we haven't changed, um, these. We're, we're, we're not thinking about this one on the left at the moment.
Yeah, right.
We're just trying to get to them.
What's, what's the frontage on that, that one in the middle?
This one here?
How many feet?
The engineer has it drawn at two hundred, including this radius and this piece of straight.
No, the, the other lot.
This frontage here is two hundred and thirty feet?
So, if you were really to re-engineer this, um, you could achieve the two hundred foot frontage for the parcel on the left. If you carved up and negotiated something perhaps with the owner of the Donald.
Let's see, is that a, that's a paper road in between?
Right, I, I don't believe-
Well, that's a long paper road.
So, is that, that's, that's been verified that that's a, here we go.
Right. It's on, it's on the maps. You can look at it on the assessors map. It's on there.
Okay, so that's not a, it's private, private property. That's a public, uh, public way, if you will.
Well, you can always try to negotiate with the town to, you know, you give them land here.
Mm-hmm.
Take some land there and reshape-
You had mentioned that last time.
The way the road comes down so that if you move it over thirty feet, well, that will still only give you another thirty feet. Brings you up to, would you say one forty-five brings you up to one seventy-five? I mean, these are both zoning issues, so we have no control. We can't waive it. It would be the ZVA that you'd have to-
And you're talking about lot size.
Lot size and frontage.
That's what we advised last time, I believe.
Yeah.
I've been advised that section forty-eight, or forty-eight, section six protects those as building lots.
Well-
So, we just need to get to them.
Well, and you know what? That would be the determination, I think, that you should talk to the zoning enforcement officer on because I think that it is, and I, I know what you mean by chapter forty-eight, section six. However, I don't, as they stand individually, they are, but not on a combined basis, and that's the question. I'm not sure.
So, you're redrawing the lot, the lot lines?
I agree with you that pre-existing lots prior to zoning are, are lots. You know, if it's feasible to build on. However, I don't think, once you change the, the individual lots and the sizes, you may lose that grandfathering. And that's what needs to be determined.
And it's our understanding that we haven't changed this footprint. This one's untouched. This one changes because we're making a radius in it.
Well, you're changing because you're going from like six individual lots to one large lot, even though the outside border is the same. The nature of it changes from six individuals to one overall.
That's the way I'm seeing it.
However many are in there.
Yeah, well, I, I believe that those have been that way for-
Forever.
You know, well, I don't know when that changed, but-
Prior to zoning, it doesn't matter when.
Right.
But that's the point, is they still are in zoning as six individual lots, so you are in essence changing them from the six individuals to one overall.
Here's, here's what I would suggest is this, is because it is a fact, a zoning issue.
Thank you.
Because it is a zoning issue, I think the best way to go about this is go to the zoning enforcement officer. He'll either agree with you or turn you down. If he turns you down, you have the right to immediate appeal to the ZVA on it and let them decide it. I think that would be the, the smartest route to go, because like Steve said, we can't waive zoning.
If you took that radius out of there, curvature out of there and just a straight line, how many feet did you say it was?
Hundred and forty-five.
Hundred and forty.
Yes.
I thought that he added-
Steve added thirty for the road he can't take.
Yeah, I added thirty when I was trying to talk about moving the road a little bit.
Yeah, we're at, uh, one-
Earlier, we were calling paper streets, right?
Well- You know, what, what am I really measuring on these, uh, on these, I'm, I'm going to call it, uh, one forty-eight.
Yeah, okay. Um, who owns the property across the street there below with the current radius of this?
This?
Yeah.
This is open space as part of the Tailwind Circle, which is the old airport.
I mean, it can always be done with a hammerhead design, although I don't know which, which one's worse. But it still doesn't, it, it still doesn't get you the two hundred feet.
So, so let's just, for the sake of argument, let's, let's say that, that these, as I've been advised, these are building lots. Can we get to them by this representation? Is this something approvable with you guys?
In concept, yes. The only things that, that we're seeing is an issue, well, we've seen it all along, is the fact that you've got problems with complying with zoning. That, that's, that's, that's the issues that we've seen from the beginning.
Okay, so what's, um-
Are you going to develop these in concert with your other development across the street while you do that?
In, in theory, yes.
Yeah, okay.
That would be the intent.
Okay.
Again, we're, and we're currently developing the, uh, it's a small lot on the corner of Lake Shore and Priscilla, that intersection, which is kind of over here.
Okay.
Okay, so, so I'm going to show you that these really are acceptable zoning-wise, size-wise.
Well, they aren't acceptable size-wise. That's, that's, that's the issue. Well, one of them is, right?
Well, they're both less than an acre.
Oh, they're both less.
At the moment.
Okay, I thought one of them was, wasn't one of them?
This, this third one is that's over here, but this is-
Most difficult one to get to.
Dare I say it harder to get to?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's why we won't talk about that one at the moment.
Not as easy to get.
Yes.
Then, then I'll, I'll, I'll get something done on this, uh, the answer of, of, of square footage size here. And then we have to answer this question about how frontage is determined on, uh, on a cul-de-sac.
Come in and see Ray tomorrow. I'm sure he could get to Bob. Start there.
Okay. I'm not sure I can think of anything else that I should be checking with you on.
Well-
Well, that's a good thing because I think our purview is, you know, it's pretty much limited to the, the cul-de-sac, right? In terms of the, the length of it, the width of it, you know, the, basically our regulations regarding the cul-de-sac, right? If it be zoning in terms of frontage and-
But these would also be A and Rs that we would sign off on. I mean, if they don't comply with zoning, we're-
Right, right, but I mean, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but isn't the purview would be pretty much limited to that cul-de-sac, right?
Right, exactly, yeah.
In terms of the details of the cul-de-sac. How long is it?
Well, safe access is really the standard. So, what we determined it as safe access, if it includes that, then yes. So, because A and R plans-
Is that property across the street under your control?
Referring to this again? Yes.
And you have, you've determined you can't flip the, the circle?
It's not going to gain him.
Well, it gains, it gains him something. I mean, it-
How?
Gets him up to a hundred and forty-eight feet.
Oh.
Save that argument as a give to the ZVA.
Yeah. It's only about three extra feet it gets him, I think, if, if you flip the cul-de-sac.
Okay, well, we're still, we're around-
How about the third lot? Are you planning on doing anything with that or is that just going to sit?
The intention is something would happen with it, and the intention would be to build a house on it. A family would live there. But in my, from my perspective, this seemed more cut and dry. And then, uh, in dealing with the other one, you know, is it worth it? Because it's, it's further away than these two are. Or, or it's, it's maybe the same as this one for distance, but you know, you don't gain two getting to it. With this one here, you gain two lots getting to it. And we're curious to see what happens with the house we're currently building. You know, is it worth a hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars? Add all factors in.
Okay, so you know what your next step is, right?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Chris.
Now, oh, okay, so Rick, Rick Udrow and Tom DePlacido.
Are they still out there?
Yep. They are. It is, but every now and then you got to close it.
I know.
Kicks up.
How you doing?
Okay, all good. You ready?
We're ready.
Microphone. One of them is yellow.
One of them's got a low battery.
You're lucky. Good evening. Rick Udrow with United Consultants here with Tom DePlacido. Uh, Mr. DePlacido is looking at the purchase of a piece of property on Holbrook Street, um, just to the west of Pond View, near the curve on Holbrook Street to Rockwood Road. Uh, just for a point of reference to the property. What we've done is laid out a conventional subdivision complying with the zoning requirements for the town. Uh, consists of a roadway system, two roads coming in off of, uh, Holbrook Street, serviced the nine lots that we have proposed. We have identified three wetland areas partially located on the site and some additional buffer zone from an off-site, uh, location over here as well. So, as I've said, we've laid this out as a conventional subdivision. And what we were hoping to do was, uh, discuss with the board tonight the option of an open space development project. As you can see here, what we've done is created a loop road here, which will service the same nine lots. Identified the yard areas for those lots and then identified an area in green here which would be preserved as open space. As you may know, this property is part of the fishing club, hunting club located off of the Rockwood Road-
Yep.
Area. It's in a butter to a good portion of this property. This being the Pond View development is done some time ago. So, we were sensitive to that and trying to provide for an open space area around the development to screen the neighbors. Connectivity to the existing open space for the hunting fishing club, uh, located here. We also have some plans that you can see that have the topography on them. Uh, one of the things that we identified, as you probably are all aware, this is a very challenging corner to maneuver. Uh, we've positioned the roadway there and we felt it would be an opportunity to create some grading here and improve the site distance as part of this project. So, that's one of the reasons we chose to start the loop road there, um, would be basically to remove that hill, come in with a roadway system. And that would help to increase the site distance along Holbrook Street at that very sharp corner.
What is the site distance with your redesign? Is it?
Uh, we haven't really got that far yet, but I think we could get up into the three hundred foot range.
Wow. There we go.
You know, coming around that corner.
It's tough.
It is. It's, it's challenging of being out there, walking the road. It's, it's, uh-
Dangerous.
It's, yeah. It's a challenge, so.
So, you wouldn't be going for the bonus, uh, lot?
We only have nine lots, so we get the ten percent bonus, which would be nine tenths of a lot. We need to get to the ten lot to get the bonus for the open space.
Oh, is it ten?
It's a ten percent increase.
Oh, yeah.
So, on that, on that last lot to the left there.
This lot here?
Yeah.
Yep.
That, that's pretty steep, isn't it?
Yeah, we'd be proposing some grading in here.
To flatten it out.
Flatten that down to this roadway, to this roadway, but yeah, it's, it's probably a twenty-foot elevation change, very abrupt elevation change in that area. So, that, you know, that would be part of the grading to improve this site distance here. Uh, would also be to, to instruct that lot on, of the house on that lot there.
Several years back, Tom, did you do the houses on the other side of the street?
Yes, I did, yep.
Right, and those worked out pretty successfully.
Could you show the, uh, conventional plans?
This one or the?
I think that one, I mean-
Yeah, this is the conventional, the colored-up plan?
Yep.
Now, under that plan on the left-hand corner down there, what would you propose in terms of grading and site, uh, distance changes, et cetera?
Well, we're proposing on this plan to have two A and R lots that would have access off of Holbrook Street. So, we would be looking to do grading in that area to allow for that house to be sitting- house to be sitting down and, and driveway access to be provided off there as well.
But probably less than the...
Certainly less grading.
Than the other one, yeah.
Certainly less grading would be necessary.
Yep.
So, again, I, I think, you know, with the connectivity of the existing fishing club, hunting club, and the benefit of that, that it's, it's a good alternative to consider the open space plan, uh, but before we went too far down the road, we wanted to come in and discuss it with the board.
The other thing is the topos of the site. If you go with this one, I mean, you're getting really into some challenging engineering back in that corner of that last...
Correct.
That last site.
Correct.
I mean, my feeling is that what's gonna dictate which direction is the whole, the situation at Holbrook in terms of safe entry and egress, um, you know, 'cause it is a challenge in terms of visibility as well as the, you know, the, uh...
Grade change.
The grade.
It wouldn't hurt to have a sidewalk along the front there, too, where that curve is.
That would make a really difficult driveway entry off of that corner lot.
Well, not only that, but I'm not sure, I'll have to double-check, but are A and Rs considered part of a subdivision?
Right.
I don't think they are. So, so you would probably have to get those, those, uh, those lots off of your roadways also if you want to...
Yeah, we could certainly do that. We could certainly do that.
Actually, um, just a, mentioning sidewalks there, we go back to the open space plan?
Sure.
Actually, if you put a sidewalk through there, they're not safe enough on Holbrook Street.
Right.
Well, yeah, but if someone's walking along Holbrook Street, I don't think they're gonna wanna walk all the way up there. I mean, and it is in our regulations that if you, if you develop along a roadway, that you have to put a sidewalk.
It looks doable, like you would be able to...
Yeah.
Achieve it. Along Holbrook.
It's all about Holbrook, I think.
Yeah, well, obviously, you know...
It's a challenging site with that.
It is.
And we think we can improve it with some, with some grading, 'cause that's, in essence, what the issue is, is you come around the corner, the slope is right there. So, if we were able to pull that slope back, create the entrance road, it would certainly improve the site distance around that corner.
How many feet is that?
It's about six hundred and fifty feet.
From where to where? Sorry, that followed?
This roadway.
Oh, the whole distance of it. So, from driveway to driveway?
The driveways here, I mean...
No.
Along Holbrook. Holbrook Street entrances to...
The road entrance.
Yeah.
I believe they were about four hundred feet.
Yeah.
Three hundred, over three hundred and fifty, which is your requirement, but I believe it was about four hundred feet.
Well, I think it works. I mean, I, I, I don't know all the dimensions of everything. I, I don't know what the dimensions of the lots that you're...
Right.
On your, on your first plan.
Of the conventional or the...
Conventional, yeah.
Yeah. They're basically all fifty-five thousand square feet, or larger. Um, they have the adequate frontage, they have the required circle, um, lot width, et cetera. So, they certainly, you know...
Oh, I see why you did those as A and R lots. They don't have the frontage in the subdivision.
No, actually, we did them as A and R lots, so we'd only have seven lots in the subdivision, and we could have a fifty-foot road layout as opposed to sixty. Was one of the reasons. But, we could certainly reconfigure that if that was a major issue.
Oh, oh, okay, well, I mean, it...
Regardless, Steve, I, I would prefer not to have two driveways coming out on Holbrook...
Well, so would I, but I would, I would still, you know, because they, you, you still have to take your driveway off your frontage. I mean, that...
And on, on the, uh, open space, that works?
Yes, on the open space, it's perfect. But on this one here, yeah, you'd have to reconfigure the frontage on a couple of those lots to, to get the, uh...
Well, that has two, that, that has two hundred, I mean, you can see the circle, so I'm pretty confident that one's...
What about the one on the right?
That one's probably smaller, that's definitely smaller than two hundred.
But, you know, this is the whole idea that we went through the OSP process, though, you know, to put it in place, the open space planning was to, so we could play with these.
Right, but you have to be able to demonstrate that it's a legitimate lot before you even...
And I'm assuming that the...
I think that one lot line has to be moved, and then you can probably shift those two bottom ones up.
You could probably push this line out, and this line over and get it, you know? I don't think it's a major, major issue, but...
No, it isn't a major thing, I just wanted to make sure that it was, it was obvious to you that it, it, it looks like it, it, it wouldn't be a legitimate lot.
I'm sure the hunting and fishing club would prefer that as an open space as well.
Oh, I'm sure they would.
What kind of, um, houses' structures are you thinking on the open space proposal?
Do you mean the houses or something?
On the houses, they'd be more of an upscale, you know, second time or third time, move-up-byer type of thing. Um, a little bit, you know, four-bedroom, maybe a five-bedroom colonial type of thing.
You think you can fit that on those lots?
Oh, yeah, I think, um, what are they, um, twenty thousand half-acre lots or something?
Small for a house that big.
We basically just showed boxes here of thirty by sixty-four foot boxes, but I...
We just showed a thirty by sixty-four foot box, so if you, you know, turn the house, made them a little deeper, L-shaped, things of that nature, you can certainly make them bigger.
So, there's a standard forty-foot houses with a twenty-four-foot garage?
We'd be a little bit more creative in that.
Well, I, I, that's the dimensions he gave, so...
Correct, I mean, that's what we looked at, just for the sake of the discussion tonight. Tommy usually wants to get very creative with his houses, and does a very nice job, but...
Now, is there any other access to open space up above? Because I know you can't get over to the, uh, the fishing and hunting club, but is there any other open sp- because isn't, um...
This is a lot in Christina Estates.
Oh, okay.
There's a house, there's a house right in here, and there's some open space.
There's no trail to this end of Christina Estates, I don't know.
No, there's not. There's some down here, couple lots over is some open space.
My concern is that corner, the way that's laid out. Having that on the corner there.
Yeah, entrance to the driveway.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, people coming, coming out, and somebody coming in.
Yeah, that's, that's tough.
Well, hopefully, they can get, improve the sightlines there, they can improve the sightlines.
Well...
Still, when you come into a curve like that, you're looking both ways, I mean, it's, it's tough.
I think we can actually open it right up so that, you know, you can see through the corner when you're driving down Holbrook Street. If you were coming towards one fifteen, you know, so you'd actually see...
Correct.
The street, and actually see what was coming the other way, and what was coming around the corner.
We may have to have some landscaping conditions on those lots.
Well, if you're driving on Holbrook Street, I agree with you, if you're coming out of your, your road, you're really gonna crane your neck both ways to, to...
Or just, you know...
See whether it's flat or not, you know?
Put in the sightline easement. Just build it right in the order conditions.
Why wouldn't you, uh, it, to that point, why wouldn't you take that whole layout and shift it over to the, to the lot line on the right?
Over to this area?
Yeah, just take the whole thing and shift it to the right.
Well, what we were trying to do was the, the grading for a double purpose of this roadway and the site distance here, I mean, that's what we were looking at.
Yeah, I think it would be worse if you didn't get that grading done on that corner. Where does the, where does the downhill slope start heading down?
I mean, look at the lines there.
Oh, they bow right in this area here.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, you're trying to get as many lots as possible, and that's a constraint which is making the access egress of, you know, from Hol, Holbrook, less than optimal. I mean, let's face it, I mean, in terms of the way it's laid out at the corner, you're in a situation where you kinda have to put it at the corner in order to get as many lots as possible in that plan.
No, I think, there would, there's a lot of options. We could've come in with a cul-de-sac roadway and had a stub road off of that, similar to the original plan, you know, just in a smaller scale. I mean, there were a lot of options. What we were looking at doing was really increasing the site distance in this area along Holbrook Street, so...
So, you're intentionally putting it at the corner?
Correct, correct, I mean, as Mr. Byron said, this whole thing could slide down and be off the corner, but then you're gonna have cars maneuvering that corner, and you're gonna have an intersection, you know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet from it, so you're still gonna have potential site distance issue.
And what does it look like if it's further down Holbrook, um, closer to Rockwood, in terms of where that...
This, this?
With Holbrook, yeah, what does that look like a little further down?
Well, you know, again, if you, if you came in at this, you know, this location here, now you've really gotta turn your neck to get around that corner here.
Well, depending on how far, I mean, I, I don't know, could, I mean, is that, could you show the, the, can you, can you show the wetlands in terms of where the wetlands is there?
Yeah, there's a hundred-foot buffer zone line right here.
So, that's what you're trying to skirt?
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, obviously, we wanna stay out of the buffer zone...
Oh, I, I agree.
If at all possible.
And I just, I just, you know, maybe I need to see it first, but, you know, I, I definitely have some concerns about that corner, yeah.
What's your average frontage?
Um, approximately a hundred feet.
And all these lots are gonna have, um, be able to fit septic on them?
Yes, yep, we've shown septic systems here for a four-bedroom house, you know, obviously, a five-bedroom house could change that, but we roughly sized them on what we're anticipating for soils out there.
So, this is a subdivision for people who definitely don't want pools.
Just kitty pools.
So, what does a five-hundred-foot cul-de-sac look like? What does a five-hundred-foot cul-de-sac look like, just one-way in and out?
Yeah, basically, that's what you'd have.
In terms of the number of lots, um, that you can, you can develop versus what you're proposing?
They have to have a hundred feet of frontage, yeah.
Yep.
So, yeah, they, they provided it on there.
I actually, I, I see the direction you're going there, and I think what we're saying is if you could put some sightline easements along here...
Correct.
This is actually a huge improvement over that corner. This is the best opportunity you can have to really open this up and almost make that corner go away, if you know, you know, visually. I think it would be worse to do, I, I think this is a great solution to try and make things better there.
And you may be right, I think, you know, until I see it, you know, I just, you know, 'cause right now you don't have traffic, you know, coming on and off Holbrook there, so now it might be an improvement.
I understand that, right.
So, I, I agree with Michelle, it's gonna be improvement, does the fact that now there's traffic coming on and off Holbrook, you know? If you add those things up, then what do you, what do you left with?
And these are the great things about this meeting, is we take these things in and we focus on them as we go further into the design.
What if we have a state where he wants to put the entrance, so that we could walk up there and watch how the traffic goes by exactly where it is?
Yeah.
Because we'll be able to know how flat it's gonna be with the grading.
You know what? You read my mind, I was just thinking the same exact thing.
What's that?
If they made it one way, so that you can only come in here, you would never be exiting out there, you'd only come in here and exit out there.
Yeah, that would be...
And it's not such a long roadway where it'd be a, you know...
No, not at all.
Basically, someone, one, ignoring it, or two, hardship.
Right.
No people will, you know, they're... Teenagers.
Well, you can put those, you can put those fingers...
They're all family neighbors.
Like I have at airports, right? You can, what are you...
That's why she's the architect of the lots.
Again, and these are all things, you know, we, we put in the pot as we go into the grading, into the site distance calculations, and all the things that would be necessary to develop it.
But I do like the idea of the one-way.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a great idea.
That addresses a lot of it, yep.
Do you, now, this is... Never mind.
Say it, Walter, come on.
You put bulletproof, bulletproof glass in the windows that face the, the, uh...
The hunting club? Well, if I remember correctly, and I got a little turned around when I drove, um, this is the fishing part, although I was surprised they didn't shoot at me.
That's a long way, you know?
I was surprised they didn't shoot me when I drove down and I had to talk to them.
They're very protected, though.
They are, I found that out firsthand, and it is beautiful back there.
It is beautiful.
Oof, spectacular. But, you know, we're, you know, I would say we're about fifty feet in elevation change above them, down into their area. Theirs, property is all fenced off somewhere in that vicinity there. Um, they do have an access road somewhere in here that goes in, more like a fire road, it's gated off, doesn't look like there's a lot of activity on it.
Right.
Really, where does it come out?
Comes out just, just beside of the river, on Holbrook Street, is a gate and an access road in.
On, on this, this side?
Mm-hmm.
As opposed to the main driveway further down?
Yeah.
There's another secondary entrance there.
Hell, I don't understand that. I've never seen that.
They, they, they hide things pretty well in there. It is, uh, it is very nice.
The other thing that was nice about the lot, keep it a little bit away from Pond View, is the, the neighbors on Pond View get some benefit to the open space, too, when they're back yards.
Yep.
They don't have a house dapping up directly to it.
What's the size of those lots roughly, uh, at this point?
These lots, yeah, they're all a little bigger than twenty thousand square feet, twenty-two thousand square feet.
About half an acre, yeah.
My, that's tight for a five-bedroom house.
Go, go up in Norwood.
Well, can you believe I'm saying that?
Well, in my neighborhood that I lived in in Milton, if you combined four lots, you'd have a little over a twenty thousand square foot lot.
Yeah, but were you putting five-bedroom houses on them?
You could put a decent-sized house on four of those lots together, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We did some large houses in Norwood on twelve thousand five hundred square foot lots, a couple subdivisions. Norwood's largest residential zone is fifteen thousand.
All right, I, I think that you've gotten most of our comments, right?
Yes.
All right, are we all done? Anybody have any questions?
I would absolutely think that you'd have to build into the order conditions a permanent sightline easement on that corner.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, that...
Right, right.
Well, even Alberta spruce, you know, you put them in, they're tall, and...
Even the ability for the town to cut down saplings and stuff.
You know, that'd be a great addition, in addition to the turning island down on, uh, on, uh, Rockwood, you know, all these things, and really made a great difference, so it's been a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, review the decision for Rockwood Road-Stacy Road. When do we have to have that signed up?
Today.
Do we really?
Be anxious to start building that, really?
Well, yeah, I didn't think that it was that quick, though.
This is the season, Steve.
It's the middle of April, they wanna get going, probably.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm talking about legitimate timeframes here that, uh, I mean, I know they want it signed today.
We closed the hearing on March eighteenth, so...
Oh, did we?
Mm-hmm.
We did.
Yeah, I think all the issues were addressed, I think.
Yep.
Do we have a, um...
Do you have a draft? Do you have a decision, I think?
Special permit application?
Yep. That's for two oh six, oh, where's, oh, there it is, eleven Stacy. Thank you.
All right. I don't see a copy of it yet, Betsy. Oh, there it is, that's the last thing I'm...
Let's look at finding number four.
New typo there.
I'm gonna blame that one on Gino.
Okay.
Now, every time we mention estate lot, it should be capitalized, right? So there is, there's, all the way through there, here, there are some estate lots that aren't capitalized. If you go on to, the first time I noticed it was in, was on page three of eight.
Mm-hmm, I see it.
Yes, some of them have it.
Yeah, some of them are capitalized and some of them aren't.
Well, that's.
Just have to make sure that they're all capitalized.
That's easy enough.
We do have a definition for it.
And then in one case, LOT is all capitalized.
Yeah, that happened several times, but not always.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The most major conversation this board has had before.
I don't wanna go there.
No, I don't.
Page six, bottom paragraph, North Street.
You're saying what? Oh.
Yep.
An estate lot located on North Street, yeah. In a residential R2 district, didn't, isn't this an R1 district?
Yes.
Isn't that what it said way back at the beginning?
Yes, it did.
Okay, so that's one.
North Street's probably R2.
Yeah, probably is.
Hey, you gotta be good, sister.
Did I miss anything? I mean, I, I circled a lot of stuff, but, oh, besides that, is there anything on that page?
Just the, uh,
Is there anything on that? They were all minor things. So, shall we vote on the, uh,
The motion?
Well, it is. Oh, yeah, it is a special permit, that's right, yeah. So, yeah, we should make a mo, make a motion on it.
How about I make a motion to approve the special permit application decision 2013-15?
Thank you.
For 11 Stacy Road.
What about with edits that were given to Betsy?
With the edits and typos, as noted on Steve's copy.
Roll call.
Dated, dated April 15th, right?
Um, the decision was voted on April 15th. Thanks, Walter.
Roll call, bro.
Special permit.
I see. Aye.
Walt, Walt, say your name.
Walter Byron, aye.
Jeff Bolimbo, aye.
Stephen McClain, aye. Peter Chippman, aye.
Michelle Mayhew, aye. The ayes have it.
The ayes have it.
Awesome. That was an arg.
Oh, my God, how does that go back to you, to you, Bart?
You wanted to put it on.
Okay, next.
Do we need to sign the back page of one of the?
Yeah, I've got it, I've got the signature page and what the vouchers, so when it goes around, you can sign.
Now, Dunkin' Donuts, what, what does Dunkin' Donuts have in there now? Do, do they have granite? Is that what he's thinking of putting in there, is granite?
I saw that email.
He said manu.
Because we could just waive it.
Oh, I didn't look at that close.
Usually would.
Did he request a waiver so he could do manu?
I think it was asphalt berm, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was, it was.
It was asphalt berm, yeah.
But we, we should just waive it to con, to cement concrete instead of, um, granite.
I mean, I've put both in before, and, and the concrete is substantially less.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's a pretty high-volume spot to, to having the.
Yeah, absolutely, that's why I'm saying concrete is a better resolution than, uh,
Asphalt.
Than, than putting in asphalt, yeah.
And where specifically is the?
He said around the landscaping.
The whole area.
I thought he said around the landscaping beds. I thought that was all he was asking.
Yeah, but he said in the landscaping beds.
Huh?
Around the islands? Was it around the islands?
It was when you, when you drive into the parking lot, straight in front of you was where that landscaping berm was going to go.
Yeah, to separate you from the drive-through lane.
That section there was going to be Cape Cod, he, he's requesting it to be Cape Cod berm.
Well, that's a pretty small section.
Was it just in front, 'cause that landscape berm comes down to the right to separate the drive-through as you're going around?
Yeah.
So, like, where do you transition from?
Part of that new drive-through roadway that they've got there?
Yeah, I think you better grab a plan.
I'll grab a plan.
I mean, because if it's just the landscaping bed, you're talking about 24 feet.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
But silly, and how does it transition? What's the detail of a transition into?
No, but, um, which I don't think is a hardship, to be honest with you.
Oh, right, for him to do it the right way.
But if it's the 100 plus 24 feet, that's something totally different.
I was surprised when I saw that.
Yeah.
Thought we came up with a pretty good plan, I was surprised.
Yeah, if anything, I could see them requesting that along the drive-through, because as we had talked about, for just your wheels, protecting your wheels, if you happen to hop, you know, it's kind of a tight turn if you hop to the edge. But I don't think that's what he was talking about.
Didn't, he didn't state that.
No.
You know, the concrete stuff doesn't eat your tires like the, the granite's, right?
Yeah, it's fairly smooth, right? It's made smooth.
Right, and, and even if, even if it's, you know, that comes to the 90, it's not as brutal as the, I mean, especially new granite, it destroys your top.
Oh, I've, I've hit granite curbs, you know, that, taking a sharp curve and misjudging it.
And did you yell, "I wish they had monolithed berm"?
That's what happens when you slip down, uh, on, on Pond Street, right?
Went right up on, straight onto the granite. The guy that came down after me, he ended up up into the guardrail. He really flew up there. He was driving a big Acura SUV.
Is that when you found a different way to get back and forth to work?
No, 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 I still go that way. I just, whenever it's raining, I kind of pull on, pull on, I always go slow.
Was it a black Acura SUV? That's what Jeff drives.
Concrete curb. Concrete curb.
Right.
Concrete curb, yeah, it's all concrete.
The only granite curb I see is right here, is the groundings.
Right. And that's all landscaped area. So I think, I think we need the curb in there.
I mean, at this point, I mean, the project's all been reviewed, we're ready to, you know, approve this, it's not.
He, he did say granite, though, didn't he, in that email?
No, he said.
No, he wanted to replace the.
Yes, but I mean,
No, he wanted to replace the.
I thought, I thought that's what he meant.
I don't, I just thought he said.
And that's our call for.
I spoke to him this morning.
Yeah.
And my impression was that he wanted to do a Cape Cod berm rather than even the concrete.
Yeah, no doubt.
Well, he's already got concrete berm almost, I mean, through the entire site, except for that, except right around there.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we'd wanna have a downgrade here.
No, no. Because once one person asks for it, you know it goes to the next, and then the next, and then the next.
What do you mean?
Well, so, should we just inform him that, that it should be built according to the plan?
No, if you don't take up the modification, then that'll goes anywhere, so.
Right.
Right.
So we should just let him know that he should build it according to the plan, 'cause I don't hear a lot of,
Nope.
Support for, for changing it, no. All right, good. Tom meeting warrant.
We skipped Nynshire.
Nynshire.
Oh, did we skip Nynshire? Oh, yeah.
We did, yeah.
Yeah, so these guys can start building too.
Do we have the?
We had been waiting for his, um, his, which you emailed to us, I think, the, um,
Management?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, jeez, you know, I, I forgot to read that.
I hadn't read it either. I was hoping it would be here tonight.
It had to do with, um, what they're going to be giving the driver.
And Tom helped him with that, didn't he? Didn't Tom, did Tom help him with that?
That was the plan, was, I mean, he probably did, that was what we talked about, but I don't, I don't know that.
I haven't read it either.
You read it, didn't you?
Yeah, I mean, so as far as the truck traffic, I mean,
Pretty straightforward.
It's what I was, it's the most important thing, because if anyone has any leverage, if you will, with some of these, the truck drivers, that it's customer, you know, they're the ones that can make the decisions on all of those lines. It was very difficult for the town, but.
Oh, I, I remember seeing this.
Tells them about proper, uh,
But I thought the management plan had to do with, like, who, who has control of opening the gates, and, you know, there, there were other issues involved with, other than just directing traffic, because it's an unusual facility.
I mean, ideally, it would, that is the most important thing, in my opinion, but, yeah, I mean, ideally, there would.
I mean, we're not gonna start micromanaging a business right down to its, uh,
Well, I, I, well,
When they wash their windows, for God's sake.
No, 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 that wasn't it, but it, it had to do with just because of the type of facility it was, that there, that there were, I, I don't remember who, I don't remember who said it.
No, but I agree with, I, I think what came about and how the conversation progressed was our age-old problem of Sharon Ave and everything else down there. And, you know, I, I swear, if we asked, um, oh, I can't think, remember his name, what's his name again? Um, uh, oh, Kevin. If we asked him, he would have done it for us. And, and I just think, I would hate to have anything held up for this, 'cause I think he's addressing the piano, just not the bench, you know, and that's the way.
Well, the, the whole issue of, of drafting this was, was, I don't, I don't even remember who was the person who recommended it. And there were some other issues brought up, and I just can't remember what they were.
I brought, I brought it up.
And I thought it had, there were a few things that were mentioned, but.
I probably did, Steve, I probably did. Um, and this was the.
Yeah, so this is acceptable, then?
I, I can, you know.
I, I, it's, it's still with Sharon Ave and the people that are still living there, then that's, that's fine. It's an industrial park, that's what we want.
He's gonna, he's gonna work with the police department and the fire department, and they're gonna get to know each other in terms of how to manage that property, and it's.
So that management plan is fine, right?
Okay.
Now, we just have to sign, we just have to endorse it. Do we have to vote to endorse it?
Um, what, what are we endorsing?
The. Nynshire Drive.
Oh, the whole site plan?
Yeah.
Do you have a motion there, Betsy? What do we call this?
Site development plan.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the site development plan of number 9 Shire Drive.
Dated, um,
November 13th.
Dated November 13th, 2013, as.
With the last revision date of 1/2014.
With a final revision date of 1/2014.
Approve and endorse.
Approve and endorse.
Check.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The fam. Walter, you started on that by changing the zoning. How many years? It's great.
A long time ago.
Discuss the town meeting warrant, we.
We still miss, oh, yeah, we should have.
Yeah, there, there's not gonna be very many articles that have to do with zoning, just the, um,
Well, we've got the copy here in front of us.
Just the, uh, the ones that are submitted by application.
Petition.
Petition.
Petition, sorry.
And it's for our next meeting. You're just putting it on here as a point of reference for the meeting.
Right. I mean, we don't have to discuss them before the next meeting, if you don't want to.
Anyone let us argue before midnight tonight, Steve?
I'm rushing, trying to do it.
Even unless we were.
Schedule the next meeting, we've already done that.
Well, we're gonna start signing this, right?
Starting the vouchers. Betsy, do we have vouchers?
You would sign each page on the MyLash, Peter, and then I put two paper copies, you would just do a favor and just sign the, the front page.
Don't worry.
Yep.
Eh, that's all it is, the front page? Wow.
Well, those just paper copies from MyRash.
Any new business?
Uh, yeah, as a matter of fact, um, I drove past the, um, the other, uh, tower, satellite.
Yes, the, the one up here.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll just talk with the vouchers, Lynn, this is just the, um, decision, the decision for Stacy Road.
Were there any, was there any shrubbery that was included in the landscape?
I believe so.
Yes, there was quite a bit. There was quite a bit of.
So there, I don't believe there's any shrubs planted now.
They hold off until the season? Could be.
Yeah, I mean, it, it could be, but I mean, you're getting, you know, so, given that it was held up for the winter, I wouldn't expect it to, you know, be a fall by the time they're planted, I'm just saying. So, and then the other thing was the, um, the other grass that was planted, obviously, some chandling in terms of some of the water, um, didn't necessarily come in as, as, as it, as it hopefully would have, but it's, it's not too terrible, but it certainly could've been better. So I don't know what their plan is as far as, I don't know if they're gonna act at it and.
Well, I think it does, it just had. Well,
Yeah, and it's really.
Betsy, do you wanna put that on as, um, new role business again for next week, for, uh?
Sure, about the, um, the flagpole cell?
The flagpole, the, yeah, cell tower. That, that way, if we have the opportunity, we can swing by and check it out and maybe look at the plan. Maybe Betsy could look at the plan and tell us what the zoning for.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the way I see it is that.
Just, yeah, if you just, on the front one, that'll be for my records, Peter.
I don't wanna be planting in July either, you know, every, you know.
Because if we, if we have it on our agenda for next week, and at least a couple.
The plans for the estate lot.
Know it's supposed to be there.
On Stacy, yeah. And I checked the, I checked the dates, everything matches that.
Okay, we've got a number of people that drive past here every day, so I know we're all sensitive to that.
Fern Ridge Estates, request a final three lots. Is there anything that they owe us?
Yeah, Bob McGee's supposed to be working on a cost to complete on that.
What is this thing from Bob McGee, his environmental partners?
I'm not really sure. It was left on my counter with instructions to provide a copy to each board member.
Have you signed these, Peter? Or did they skip one?
I haven't seen, we saw some the other night, I signed that one.
Oh.
When you were right there, you signed that one. 1010, not bad, though. Moving.
We're done?
Meeting minutes, if you wanna approve some.
We got a bunch of them here.
Walter's reviewed all of them.
Oh, okay, so 2:40 deadline was extended till May 10.
Yeah, he grants us an extension, so.
Yeah, so I move to accept the minutes of meeting dated, give me the.
Um, January 7th, 2014.
Yep.
January 30th, and February 25th.
Cool.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So, Sunday, I pulled the cover off the pool, and I started looking at.
Good thing I didn't put grass seed down.
Goodness, very early.
I, I, well, Nate's gonna be crazy for me, but.
If you would sign.
Then I saw, what's this supposed to be tomorrow night, like, 28 degrees?
You're saying this way, so you're just going.
Anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Um, if we have nothing else, I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.